Where I'm at. One of the big things as far as civic work has been, I spent two years on the University of North Dakota Student Advisory Board. And so I have a little bit of experience with something like that, but no other civic boards otherwise. I'm running for school board because to me, education is what I believe is the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of any democracy. Without education, it doesn't have to be formal, it doesn't have to be Harvard, it doesn't have to be tech school. It doesn't have to be anything. It can be on the job training or years of experience you learn. Because after all, when we look back to education, to a PhD in some kind of science field, it's all over 500 years of coursework. So people need to have education to understand where they're headed in life. Because that determines your success. And two, the teachers we need to make sure that we keep and retain. We don't just need a teacher. Someone says, well, I've got a PhD in political science. Okay, great, but what can you do for us? Abraham Lincoln had always said a quote along the lines of, you know, compass will point you true north, but won't help you avoid the swamps between here and there. If you can't avoid the swamps, then what's the use of you knowing true north? Meaning, we can bring our kids to school, we can put them to college, we can put them in the real world, but if they say, why am I here? Why did I even do this? Thank you.
Thank you. Begin my apologies for this. Okay, Kerry, a question comes back to you. Many in the district note that the Watertown and Pure Schools are the only two E S D schools who still play on grads. Not turf. And we are the only school, Watertown, who plays football on a baseball field. So many are discussing, no agreement, what are your thoughts on a new all-sports complex with turf for Watertown?
Oh, I think that an all-sports complex would be wonderful for our sports. I guess I graduated in 1999. We won a state championship in basketball. We, I made it really far in football that year. I believe it was the game to get into the championship, I believe. So sports have always been a big thing in this town. And I really think that it would be neat to see those sports come back and have the football team have a really nice place to play football and just be proud of. Because if you're not proud of where you play, you're not going to maybe want to play. And it sounds like more kids are not going out for sports. And I, you know, I believe that sports are going to be the foundation of good education. Because if you don't have the sports, kids aren't going to really care about education. And they're going to maybe start to tear into things they shouldn't be doing. And obviously, education is the first and most important thing. But I believe that sports keep kids on that education route of a positive situation. So I believe a sports complex would be great for our town.
Great. Stephanie, want me to repeat the question?
No. A sports complex in town. I'm half and half. It would be great for the community, you know, it could bring all sorts of things in like that. But if we're going to bring a sports complex, and are we going to make it so it has ice as well? So you can have ice arena, even though it's not school. But as we know, there's a huge hockey team in Watertown. Is there going to be a spot for the swim team? Swim team is huge as well. So even though it's only school related, one side or the other says, hey, I got the short end of it. But it's not really a better complex. So based on where a lot of other priorities in the city of Watertown are now with the school, with the middle school, with the elementary school, with teachers, my vote on the current issue would be absolutely not. Maybe revisit in five years.
Good. This question then goes to Stephanie. What do you see as a school board member as Lake Area Tech's greatest need?
Lake Area Tech's greatest need? We're doing great in a lot of the things where there's needs such as energy, such as healthcare, et cetera. But I do see a lot of the teachers that they bring in, which is great. You know, it's always nice to see people that have the experience of certain teachers. But why can't we bring in teachers that could teach something like calculus, one through four? So a student says, I want to go to engineering school. Great, why don't you go spend $50,000 for a four-year degree? Hey, you know what? At L A T I, we can offer calculus one through three, including differential equations. Now you get your engineering degree for $15,000, and you kept it local, and you have more show of Watertown. Probably the same thing can go into the medical side, the same thing can go into any kind of related field. So I think we need to try to bring more accelerated classes in. Still, there's no reason we can't do that in Watertown.
Kerry, what does L A T I, L A T C's greatest need?
You know, they're a great school. They're already like one of the best in the nation. So I think they have great teachers, they have great programs. I would agree, maybe, you know, we can maybe do some more Excel programs. But it also is a two-year, you know, it's a two-year education school where it's not a full four-year. You don't want to spend that kind of money. But a lot of their credits are, you know, also transferable over to other colleges. So you can start there and then finish somewhere else and maybe not spend as much money. But I guess, they're a great school. I don't, they're doing the right thing. I don't think they really need, whatever they're doing, they need to keep doing because they're great. So.
Next question, Kerry, we're going to stay on the topic of L A T C. There are some in the state that believe that tech schools ought to report to the state, like the border regions do. Instead, here locally, since its founding, Lake Area Tech has been purview of the school board, the Watertown School Board, with a dotted line to the state tech school advisory group. Should, if you're elected to the school board, should our school board locally continue to oversee Lake Area Tech College? Or should we cede that control to the state?
Well, I think either way would be, I mean, it is a tech school. And I mean, it could easily be overlooked by the state. I mean, I don't know why our school board would have to really run that. So I guess technically, it probably wouldn't have to stay with the school board. I would say that the state would be fine running it.
Stephanie, want me to repeat the question?
No. I would say, try to keep it local in Watertown if you can. And the reasoning being is, it is very obvious we became the number one school in the country without the state's help. Not necessarily from funding, but we didn't have them telling us what you can and can't do, how you need to report this, how you need to report that. We did that on our own. So if anything, maybe the board of, in South Dakota, should look to Watertown, what do you guys do? Because the school was extremely successful. So there's really no point for the state to second and try to tell us now. If enrollment starts dropping, costs are increasing, things are falling apart, maybe at that point. But I'm not saying that we can always do it ourselves. But the point is, without them telling us what to do, we have been extremely successful in that regard.
Okay, back to you, Stephanie. One of the questions that came to us prior to the debate was, what limitations, if any, would you place on special education in the school district?
I wouldn't place any. You know, I was never part of Special Ed, but I have seen the outcomes of it. And I do know people who were, and my mother-in-law is actually a pair-up and sister. So she actually sees that kind of stuff. It's important that kids are all assessed according to their needs, you know. Not everybody can say two plus two is four, and then someone in Special Ed, well, why? And it's not that they don't understand, they need to learn the things a different way. So we can't really put limitations on that kind of stuff. These are properly funded students, these are properly taken care of. And we need to look out for the best interest of the child to do our best, help them become a member of society. If not productive, at least they are part of society as a normal human being. And they should be treated.
Good. Kerry?
I would agree, I wouldn't put any limitations on that. They should be educated to their full extent and be treated as much as everybody else in the school district, so.
Back to you, Kerry. Describe as a new school board member, how and when you would interact with the superintendent? Would you do interactions with the school principals? And what about interactions with the teachers? What would be different? What would you do in terms of those three levels of our school district?
I would think so. I think I would want to interact with all of them, just to kind of see what their thoughts and their wants, their needs, their, you know, things that they would like to see brought to Watertown to make it a better place and keep enrolling up and keep kids here. And so, yeah, I would want to interact with all of them on every level, so.
Stephanie?
Yes, I would, I'm a firm believer in the open door policy. The company that I'm transitioning from consolidating Edison of New York, they've been around since 1824. They had an open door policy that if I wanted to reach out to the CEO of Con Edison, I could do that whenever I wanted to, and I was just a site manager of a ten-turban wind farm. When you have open communication, our company actually lived on the philosophy of one team, one mission. We hear it in passing, we hear things like that, and the news is like, yeah, right. But in that company, they lived it and they breathed it. Our turnover rate was almost nil. So I believe as a school board member, an open door policy to interact with all the levels and all fairly and to find out the issues and to grab both sides of the coin. And when you've got all the adequate facts and information you need, you need to make yourself a solid decision at that point versus just going off opinion and hearsay. So the policy should be open door.
Good. Back to you now, Stephanie. New question. COVID-19, the pandemic, what did the schools do right? And what did they do wrong? Or could they have improved?
What they did right was, you know, they did their best to follow the CDC guidelines. They did their best to put a mask, maybe out there, and I get it. You know, they did it for what the best interest of, kids need to wear masks because if we don't, you know, we could spread it, but then classes will be out flying. Not everybody is at the age of, me at 36, who understands it's online, I can take classes, no problem. There's a lot of teachers who have been out there that are 50, 55, and 60. And when they were in school, they were lucky if the school even had a computer. So when you look at those kind of aspects, you know, the school did their best to stay open, to make sure they didn't close down, and try to overstress the teachers that are already working all hours of the night. My aunt's a teacher, and she said, teaching is not an eight-to-five job. It's five in the morning to seven-thirty, get your lesson plan, go to school, get home, and then be up till midnight, and then turn on your lesson plan all weekend and on some notification. So the school got, I think, most of that right. And when they gave back to the community, say, we're covering all students lunches to take the stress off of parents and everything else. And teachers who have kids in there as well, they're paying for lunches, so it takes that stress off as well. So they did a lot of things right. As far as things that went wrong, you know, I didn't really focus on the negative. I guess I focused on the fact that my kids were in school, everybody got along, people seemed to do what they could, and the teachers were very supportive. If we needed to reach out to them, they did what they could with the best tools and resources that they had available at the time.
Okay. Kerry, on COVID-19, what did the schools do right, or could they have done better?
I think getting the students back in the classroom was awesome. Just as a parent, those three months that the kids were home was not ideal. They weren't, that's just not a way to learn. For a third grader, I had a third grader, and he just, he didn't learn anything. And so it was really hard, and we were still working full-time. So it's not like you can be home with your kids all day trying to do schoolwork. So it was amazing that we were able to get back into the classroom. And yes, have to wear masks a little bit, which I know it's hard for especially K through four to understand why they have to put a face mask on. And hopefully, a lot of it was, they made it fun, maybe, I don't know how you can make it fun with kids that age. But I'm just glad that they were in the classroom, because that's the only way you can really educate is one-on-one. You can't really do it through a, through a computer. College, yes, not, not little kids. You know, even high school, you can do more online, but that K through six, you really need to be in person. And I really don't think they did anything wrong. I think it was just, like I said, it was great to be able to get those kids back in the class. And we really haven't seen any really horribly negative things from COVID in our town, so it was a plus, so.
Kerry. Back to Kerry. Have you attended school board meetings, and if so, over what period of time?
Yes, I've just attended a few here recently, just in the last probably six months. And just kind of trying to figure out what, what goes on behind those closed doors and like what they talk about. So just kind of, yeah. It's just interesting, because you don't really think about it being open to the public. And so when it is, it's kind of nice to go in and just see what they talk about.
Stephanie?
I have never been to a school board meeting. However, I am fluid and completely up to date with the last year and a half on the school board minutes. The same with city council. You know, it's not necessarily of a chance of not being there. But when you're working, when you've got children and everything else, that's not an issue for me anymore. But what it comes down to is that, since I've never been to a school board meeting, but I have paid attention to the minutes, so I do know what's going on, and it's recorded, so that's why I'm there.
Back to you then, Stephanie, kind of as a follow-up to that. As you've read the minutes, you can watch some of the meetings online, where do you see the school board doing where they could do things better, or improvement could be made, or where they screwed up?
I don't know if it's so sensitive, subject or not, a year out, a high school remodel. I get it, you know, a new school is eighty to a hundred million dollar remodeling, a school is twelve million dollars. But a guy like me, maybe it's that thinking forward mind, you think, well, it's twelve million dollars, but what's it going to be now? You know, this is going to go wrong, this is going to go wrong. And I talk to past students and talk to teachers, like, well, now this is going on, now this is going wrong. So all I see is tick, 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 tick. You know, so that's one of the things that I don't like. And then when looking at teachers that are resigning, teachers pay, you know, I would like to see some kind of room for improvement of pay. I did see recently that they all got a bonus and have gotten increases. But when you look at the overall, I feel like there needs to be room in there to bring some of the teachers' pay up. You know, for a kid that's coming out of college after a four-year degree, we're going to give you X. That's fantastic, it really is. But now we're struggling to find somebody for a middle school or the intermediate school principal. And we're saying, we're going to offer you this, and they're like, not going to Watertown, South Dakota. I don't care how cheap it is, but they, so we need to find a way to close that gap. And if we can, then we're going to be in the constant shuffling in and out of teachers, shuffling in and out. And that's not good for people either, or the community either. You can have a teacher that comes in and says, hey, I taught computer science for the last 10 years. Hey, I taught German or secondary language for the last 20 years. They come here for two years, maybe in their contract, they negotiated a moving package or anything else like that. Students are taking the classes, and they're like, you know what, I'm just not going to do it for the pay. And then we're left, well, now we've stopped the program, and they still have a teacher. So that's something that needs to change.
Kerry, what the, from your observations, what did the school board do poorly? Or what could they have improved on some issue, specific issue or task?
Well, I think that obviously, they have had a lot of stuff thrown at them recently that has been a struggle. And that's some of the things that we've been listening to when we go to the school boards. I think they're handling it really well. And I think that maybe just figuring out different ways to task things out would be maybe a little bit less stressful for the school board. But I would agree, you know, as far as getting teachers in and getting their pay good. Because here, you might have a teacher who's been here 20 years, and then a new student, or a new teacher comes in and they're getting paid the same. So then that teacher that's been in the district for 20 years looks like they're really a new teacher. So I agree on getting the teachers what, you know, respectfully, what they would, you know, deserve. But I do, I feel, I feel like the school board's done great for the stuff that's been thrown at them lately. So, because there's been a lot of issues going on, so.
Okay. Back to you, Kerry. Question from sent to the chamber was, how would you ensure that the Civic Arena remains on the rotation for South State Basketball, Skate Tournament, volleyball, basketball?
Mm-hmm. That would be amazing to have that come to our town. I think our Civic Arena can definitely host that kind of stuff. We just got to make sure our city can host as far as hotels and things like that, restaurants. And I think we're getting there. But yeah, that would be awesome to have that stuff come to our city, because it would really help with just bringing in money to our city. So I would really like to get on a rotation for that, even for more. I know we get a lot of Bs, it'd be nice to get the As back into town, so.
What would you be doing to ensure though that we do?
Well, it would be nice if maybe that sports complex came, and maybe we could have a little bit more room to host different things. And I know that we're, the ice, again, the Hockey Association, I think they're getting really close to being able to get the sheets of ice that they want. And hopefully, maybe that can also host different venues for different sports. Just because there's ice doesn't mean you can't cover it up and have another event on top of the ice, so.
Stephanie, what would you as a school board member do to ensure that Civic Arena remains in the S D H S A tournament schedule?
Sure, this would be something where we would have to present ourselves as advocates. You know, we could talk to our local district leaders, local legislators, and just try to get Watertown out there. And just seek fairness across the entire state, generally. You can't have big cities like Sioux Falls or Rapid City, or Mitchell because it's convenient, or Aberdeen because, well, this is what it is. Well, Watertown, well, you know, we're an hour and a half from here, I really want to go there. And it can happen. So that's where we come to our legislators to reach out and say, hey, we, help, can you put this on there? Can you, in your next meeting, seek fairness? Can they come down and then backwards towards the schools as well? And then just ensure we're all put in a pool fairly together.
Back to you, Stephanie. We've hit on finances and a number of the questions. We had the executive session, a million-dollar expense. We talked about a little bit about the sports complex. One of you mentioned wages and some other things. Talk to me about your view of where our finances are as a school district and as a taxpayer. What are your plans, and what do you think we need to be doing?
You know, as far as finances go, it seems to me there's quite a bit of leftover. You know, the CARES Act and CARES money has obviously helped. One thing I would like to see slow down, and I'm not sure how people are going to take that, is open enrollment. You know, we have kids that live in Watertown, we bust them all the way up to Wayford. We bust them all the way to Florence. And at the same token, that takes money out of the Watertown School District. So, and at the same token, the small towns are kind of getting the short end of the deal too. You send 35 kids from Watertown to Florence, for example, but they're not getting Watertown's tax dollars. So they're trying to support these kids, and on top of whatever they're getting for their local town, and trying to make up the deficit themselves. Watertown's another different. If we lose 30 students or bring 30 students, whatever the case may be, and no matter which way you look at it, there's only the funding coming to escape. We're getting shortchanged somehow. We need to find a way to close that gap. Make it a little bit more stricter compared to what it is. I know that enrollment is hard, but we also need to try harder to keep our students here and not send them over. Especially in the wintertime, it's dangerous to put them all 30 miles out there. This is South Dakota, not California.
Kerry, school finances. Tell us what your understanding is in light of the sports complex talk and some of the other things that we've hit on this evening.
I guess until a person really gets in there, it's going to be hard to really say what it is. But I, you know, I think that what they're doing with finances has been good. I mean, they've been doing what they need to do, but until a person really gets in there, you're really not going to understand it.
And the final question, probably the biggest one. What about teacher pay, Kerry? Are we, are we competitive? Do we need to do increases? How do we fund the increases? What's your view? Every year, every other year, talk about teacher pay.
You know, I think that teachers should get paid a ton. I give them so much respect for what they do. It takes a lot to be a teacher, anywhere you teach. I mean, because you're always going to have the kids that are, you know, that have the behavioral problems or, you know, things like that where it's hard. I, you know, I teach J's, so I go into classrooms, and so I can kind of see some of that. And I just give teachers the utmost respect. So to give them some good pay would be probably just a great thing for them. But I think that we, I mean, stay competitive within the state. But I would think probably a yearly raise would be good for teachers, whether it's just a percentage. But I just, yeah, I respect all teachers. They're great for what they do.
Stephanie, your thoughts on teacher pay and how we fund that?
With teacher pay, it don't, we're semi-competitive. You know, I do know of teachers in some districts that are making more than ours that actually have more, more experience than the others. You know, as far as the pay goes to teachers, we need to ensure that we're not just saying, here's your two-year cost of living adjustment, you know, that's, it's kind of a kick in the face. It's, you know, you did really good, you brought in all sorts of students, I owe you 2%. You know, we need to do a better job of appreciating teachers as well. You know, teaching is a passion. It's, teachers don't teach because they know they're going to make a million dollars. They don't need a million-dollar trader, they'll go trade money on the stock market. You know, they'll become themselves a broker, whatever they want to do. But teaching, working for Tower Systems, we could be working at Terex. We could be doing any kind of job that requires a physical ability, or even just sitting at a desk. We could have mental impairment, we could have a physical impairment. And when we have our education to fall back on, education can bring you into so many more different avenues than you never thought was possible. But without it, you are just a guy that, well, I worked at Terex for 30 years and I got hurt. Sorry, man, can't help you out. So I would appreciate your vote on June 15th. But education, I believe, is fundamental and the foundation of this country.
Take it, Stephanie. Kerry, your closing remarks?
I guess, just, yeah, I guess as a parent of two kids going to be in the district for the next eight to 10 years, it'd be, I guess I think it'd be fun to kind of get to be a part of that. And I'm a Watertown alumni, I, this will be our forever home, we won't be going anywhere. So I guess I think I'd make a great candidate and a great school board member just as my fresh new outlook of trying to bring something different into the, into the school district. So I would appreciate your vote.
It always takes courage, I think, to run for elected office. A lot of people don't realize that until you're up here on stage. With that, I'd like to thank both of you for throwing your hat in the ring. And John Iverson was not able to be with us tonight. We wish all three of you well, and thank you very much for presenting your ideas to these questions to the voters of the Watertown School District. Thank you both very much. We'll take a short break, reassemble, and we'll begin the meritorial debate forum in about five minutes.
You missed Phil's name.
Tell them this is Phil.
Mark!
Huh?
You missed Phil's name.
No, we didn't.
Oh, my God. I know.
All right, we're going to flip the plan to see the votes. This will be on the action, and then we'll rotate. Tim will be typing your set cards.
Yep. It's going to be a half. Oh, okay.
Ninety seconds, last of questions. Speaker Interim, he has some questions.
If you would explain that to them.
I would.
Yes, absolutely.
And then ninety seconds. Before we begin, I got a public service announcement. This is regarding voting. Absentee voting will be from Friday, May twenty-eighth until Monday, June fourteenth. No voting on Memorial Day from eight AM to five PM. Voting will be in the City Hall Council chambers. Please use the council chamber's door, look for the "Vote Here" sign, or if a voter needs elevator access, they may enter from the door on the north end of the building. So that's the voting prior to the actual voting day. Good evening. My name is Mark Robey, and on behalf of the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce, I'm your moderator for tonight's meritorial candidate forum. We'll use the following procedure for the forum. We'll have a two-minute opening introduction where the candidates get to tell the voters why you are running for the, for the city and city mayor position, and what qualifies you for that position of responsibility. Next, we'll move into the question and answer, where we'll ask each candidate a question, and they'll have ninety seconds to answer. We're going to remind the candidates and myself to speak into the microphones so our online viewers can hear us, which we had some difficulty during the school board meeting. I would like to note that we will, I will have the option to offer rebuttal if the situation warrants it, but we won't have a rebuttal to the rebuttal as I review the candidates. Here's an example. Let's say that a candidate B refers in their answer to something that candidate A said a few minutes prior to that, during their question. I may offer a rebuttal to candidate A to rebut something that candidate B says. At that point, it ends. The order was for the questions were selected by a coin flip, and at the end, we'll have a ninety-second closing remarks as to why we should vote for me as a candidate. Reed, one of the coin tosses, so let's begin with your two-minute introduction. Tim will be typing.
Thank you. My name is Reed Holley, and I'm a lifelong citizen of Watertown. And my wife, Tanya, and I have four children, all born here. And I'm running for mayor simply because I love this community. It's given me so much, I want to get back to it, and I believe I'm the best candidate to do so. I believe I certainly have the civic mindedness necessary. Among other things, I serve on the Perry Lakes Hospital Foundation Board, the Jenkins Board, I deliver meals for the Sandwich Ministry, and I'm also on the Anza Foundation Board, which is the prime sponsor of the Sacre Complex in southeast Watertown. I have the experience in government. For three terms, I served as Watertown's state senator in Pier, where I, where I handled bills and laws that benefited all of Watertown. I served as the chairman at times of the Commerce Committee and Local Government Committee, which means I have experience tackling anything that Watertown can face in a governance issue, as well as experience dealing with economic development, housing, and workforce development. I have taken that can-do attitude into my role as a city councilperson, where most recently, most of you will probably know that I spearheaded the effort to finally, after decades, solve the ice arena facility problem in Watertown. The new mayor is going to have to accept and embrace the transition to a city manager form of government, which is a more limited role. It's going to be more about one of crafting a vision and implementing that vision. And my Watertown, and my vision for Watertown is one all about positivity. I think City Hall should be about customer service. You, the taxpayers, are the customer. City Hall should serve you as best as it can. I think the first thing any citizen should hear when they enter City Hall is, how may I help you? That's certainly going to be the attitude I will bring as mayor, and that's going to be, how can I help you? We have accomplished great things in Watertown, but most all of those have been led by citizen groups like H2O2020, civic-minded groups like Watertown Development Company. And for too long, City Hall has been viewed as a hindrance and not a help. I'm Reed Holley, and I'm here to help you.
Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm Sarah Karen. I live at 360 North Lake Drive. I've been your mayor since 2017. I'm a licensed civil engineer, a certified public works professional, and a certified floodplain manager with over thirty-five years of experience in public administration. I've done everything from setting flow meters in sanitary sewer manholes to acting as the CEO. My experience will be invaluable in, during our city manager transition. I got my first job bussing tables at the age of eleven. I put myself through college, working every single semester, at first cleaning bathrooms, and by the end, teaching engineering classes. My husband, Dwayne, and I have been married for thirty-one years, and we have three adult children. I have volunteered thousands of hours as a big sister in scouts, in church, in the Watertown School District, on numerous service clubs and more. I served twenty years as on the Lake Hempeska Board of Directors, Lake Hempeska Water Project District Board of Directors. I'm a PEO sister and a municipal band member. I'm on the boards of the Watertown Concert Association and the Watertown Development Company. Flooding is a problem here. My work gave every property owner ten percent discount on flood insurance. I also helped the fire department improve their rating and lower our homeowners' insurance. I began working for the city in nineteen ninety-seven. I've worked for six mayors before becoming one myself. I'm conservative about spending money and dedicated to keeping an informed council. Under my leadership, Watertown has thrived. I'm the best candidate to provide continuity and stability as we transition into a new form of government. I'm straightforward and honest. So your vote is critical. Please vote Sarah Karen for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Since Reed started, you get the first question. Executive sessions came up at the last council meeting. South Dakota law allows, but does not mandate ever, that the city council, school board, or county board of commissioners have to go into executive session. Given that permission to not go into executive session where the public has no clue as to what's going on, will the citizens of Watertown see fewer executive sessions with the city manager and you as mayor of Watertown?
I think there, there will be fewer. There are only four reasons that we can legally go into executive session. It's used for in-depth confidential, or conversation between the city attorney and the city council. We can go in for pending litigation, personnel matters, economic development, confidential information, and contractual matters. Hundred percent of the executive sessions we've gone into have been warranted. We've been through a lot, we needed to do a lot, but I think we're beyond that, and I, I think that we, we all want fewer executive sessions.
Reed, you want me to repeat the question?
Just about executive sessions.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. Watertown has definitely abused executive session over the last several terms. Just under the last several years, Watertown has, Watertown City Council has gone into executive session over seventy-five percent of the time. These are secret meetings where the citizens of Watertown never know what's going on. Now, you can say, well, maybe that's not too much, but the average South Dakota city goes into executive session ten percent or less of the time. Sioux Falls has certainly done it less than ten percent of the time. It's all about open government and transparency. I have a history of, of doing that as your state senator. I was the prime sponsor on four bills that expanded open government laws and increased the penalty to any civil servant who violated those laws. The numbers speak for themselves, and Watertown is abusing executive session. Now, you can claim that there was COVID and other issues that warranted it, but one of the things about city council is, we're not even told ahead of time when we are going into executive session. So even that is kept secret from the city council. So you've got a secret meeting, as well as the reason behind it is secret. Now, you can ask ahead of time, but how many, but we don't even know for certain until the time comes at the end of a meeting whether or not we are going into executive session. And most of, more often than not, we don't even know what it's going to be about. So while it's true that I did vote to go into executive session, the reason is, is I don't know whether or not the reason is valid. The number of times we have gone into executive session has decreased recently, but that is only because Councilman Robey publicly announced the figure, the statistic of how often we abused executive session at a council meeting last December. And since then, we have replaced executive session meetings with secret, secret meetings where basically you split the council into five members and five members, which isn't any better.
Right. Next question. This one goes to Reed. Cities in South Dakota have a history of running private businesses. For example, after twenty years of private ownership, the city of Watertown and the city leaders, led by SX Way, the Republican National Committee man at the time for South Dakota and the publisher of Public Opinion, to move our utilities from private business to city-owned. Another example is Brookings, which owns both the communications utility as well as the city's only liquor store. Should, if the state allows and legislation is passed, and I'd be interested to know if you'd lobby for that, the city become the recreational marijuana licensee for the city of Watertown and reap the profits from that effort instead of having a private business be created to run that?
Well, it's nice that you mentioned one of my predecessors, SX Way. Not many people know I am the National Committee man, so I represent all of South Dakota to the National RNC. So on a national level, I represent all of South Dakota as well as Watertown. I think the idea of the city being in the medical marijuana field is troubling, but at least deserves some consideration.
Recreation, excuse me, recreational.
Well, rec, well, marijuana, just in general. I'm not a fan of marijuana. I think I've seen it once in my life. I've certainly never done it. But the problem is, it is coming. I think, I was amazed at how fast it happened in South Dakota. I thought we had a couple more years before it would be passed, but the citizens voted for it. I think that it's going to come whether we want it to or not. So the idea of the city of Watertown controlling it, at least having some control over the dispensation, and certainly reaping some of the profits, deserves at least some consideration because there's always the problem of how we're going to pay for everything that we want as a city. Brookings, with the way that they handled their liquor store years ago, makes a lot of money selling liquor. And there might be some people who have a problem with that, but it certainly helps the city. And it's the same thing. You're not going to stop liquor sales, you're not going to stop medical or marijuana going forward. So the idea certainly deserves some consideration. I think that we're going to have to certainly look into the legality of that and craft an ordinance, and probably going to have to change that on the state level as well for the city to accomplish that.
Sarah, you want me to repeat the question?
No, I've got it.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I think, yes, the, if the city is allowed legally to be the purveyor of marijuana, I think we should be. And I don't know if that's going to be possible, but the reason that I would want that is the city would have control over it, so there's less chance of abuse, and you won't get the back room where other things other than marijuana are going on in a business. And also, this is going to cost the city a lot more for law enforcement. We could funnel the profits into offsetting the cost of the law, extra law enforcement that we will have for having to do this new kind of business that we're doing. If it's not legal for the city to be the purveyor of marijuana, then I think that we should have strict license requirements, and every single business that meets those requirements should be allowed to be in the business, unlike our alcohol, which has an arbitrary number of licenses which we can issue, so we can learn from past mistakes.
Follow-up to that, Sarah. So you're suggesting that it's the city have one license, or we allow anybody that meets the criteria to be a licensee in Watertown?
Right, one of, one or the other, but not set an arbitrary number.
All right. Follow-up question on that, and we'll go to Sarah with this. Will you, as the mayor, work to lobby the state, because they're meeting this summer on that issue, to make sure that the city has that option to be a licensee for recreational marijuana in the city?
I will, if that's what the council wishes, and I, I won't do that if the council is against it. We haven't really discussed this yet. This is just coming to us. We have an example ordinance, which the municipal league has helped draft, and we'll be looking at that at our plan commission and city council meetings very shortly. So depending on what the council feels, if, if they're behind that view, then yes. If the community at large, judging by the plan commission and the council, is not in favor of that, then I won't pursue that.
Reed, same question. Will you, if you're elected mayor, work with our legislators in the state legislature to make sure we have that option to be the licensee for recreational marijuana?
Not only will I, I mean, first off, it deserves exploration to at least see if it's legal and how you would implement it. Not only would I, but I could definitely do a good job of that because I was on, I was involved in many summer studies as a legislator, as a state senator. That accomplished many things, and I would know how that works, and I would know how they craft laws out of it. So as mayor, I would not only lobby on behalf of it, I would be coming up with ideas and verbiage to make that happen, because I know how to craft laws on the state level. So I think it definitely deserves some consideration. I, as a councilperson, would vote to definitely explore that, start off with that. I think that the way we should do that is, because I think by law, we're going to have to issue a marijuana permit on July first. I'm not necessarily certain of that, but I know that we're going to have to issue a permit sooner than later. And if we have to, it should be a temporary permit that would rescind in case the South Dakota Legislature and the governor passes a bill that allows our city to be the purveyor.
A few minutes ago, we spoke about the city getting into the utilities business. This question goes to Reed first. In nineteen fifty-nine, the voters by a margin of two to one declared the utilities to be independent from the city council. The primary reason for the votes, as I understand reading P.J. Altrock's book, Electricity, Water, Gas, and Steam Heat, was to have the utility funds used strictly for utility business and to pay for, and business and to pay for, and not to pay for, city services as the then-mayor and council were working towards at that time. There's no question in my mind on that history. As mayor, will you attempt to lead an effort to get the utilities to fund current city efforts, pay more for those city services, or will you do, allow them to act as the independent board that they are, and keep our rates as low as possible?
Well, Mark, that certainly sounds like a page-turner of a book. I don't know where you got it, but... As mayor, I would definitely not interfere with Watertown Municipal Utilities. They have done a fantastic job over the years. We have some of the lowest, if not the lowest, service rates of any municipal utility or any city in the entire state. I don't see any reason why we should change that because if we start interfering with the Watertown Municipal Utilities and then their service charge goes up, that's essentially creating a tax on the citizens of Watertown. And there's enough people who are short on cash already. They do a fantastic job. We get excellent service in this town. The costs are low. They've got a great board. I don't see where the city should be interfering with it. I also don't think that the city should be trying to force the Watertown Municipal Utilities to do something that they don't want, like the sewer charge that has been proposed, which was the result, which resulted in the, let's say, non... Which resulted in the president of Watertown Municipal Utilities Board not being renominated for his position simply because he did not agree with that stance. And I think that was a wrong choice because he had the experience and the knowledge, and he knew how to work with Watertown Municipal Utilities. He helped the city of Watertown. And to remove that simply because they were trying to look out for what's best for Watertown Municipal Utilities and then for the citizens of Watertown, I think it's wrong. In fact, the Watertown Municipal Utilities, they've come forward and they've donated money to the city of Watertown when we have asked them. But I think we should not interfere. Let them do the great job that they're doing, and let them continue that.
Sir, you want me to repeat the question?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'll take it. Thank you. Municipal Utilities is a fantastic organization. I truly support that it's independent from the city council. It is a city department, though, and some of the things that go on, it is a public board. They oversee public money. Their budget is very similar to all of the funds combined in the other branches. And what a lot of people don't realize is that the city has money going back and forth in both directions. And the amounts of those funds are told to the city council by the Municipal Utility Board. There's half a million dollars that comes out of the general fund to pay for the lighting. We rent the electric poles. And that's a number that, I'm not arguing with that number. I think, though, that the city council and the Municipal Utility Board should discuss it together to decide if it's appropriate or not. And I believe in transparency, and I think that there's been a lack of that. I would like to see more transparency on that board in terms of the relationship with the city. And I would never, ever interfere and tell the board how to vote. There was a false statement made here about the reason of the new selection of a board member. A term expired, and by ordinance, when a term expires on the Watertown Municipal Utility Board, the mayor is supposed to appoint a new member at the first meeting of May. And that's what I did. I selected a board member, and nobody was fired or anything like that. And so I just would urge the board to have conversations with the city council about their budgets. And that's all that I would do. I wouldn't want to interfere with their operation at all.
Good. Next question goes to Sarah. You were part of the last mayoral race, and I watched it as publisher of the local newspaper, and noticed a number of out-of-town advertising effort in support of the then-incumbent mayor in our city's nonpartisan election. So the question is, you support having political parties in the state of South Dakota and money raised from Sioux Falls, Rapid City, and other towns to influence our own local Watertown nonpartisan city elections?
People outside of the city of Watertown should not be funding the mayoral election, that either candidate, any candidate. That's just wrong. The city elections are municipal. They only affect the community here. Our voters should be making their decisions based upon support from our own community. And it's a nonpartisan position, so political parties should not be involved. This is just bad for our own government to have political parties and people from outside of our boundaries contributing to and influencing our election.
Reed, the last mayoral contest, we had a, for the first time in my knowledge in city's history, significant out-of-town advertising for the incumbent at that time. Do you support having political parties and money raised from Sioux Falls, Rapid City, and other communities to influence our own local nonpartisan city election?
No, I don't. I think that this is a nonpartisan position. Certainly, you can say that, but we all know that there's partisanship in whatever capacity you serve in politics, and most people know my conservative views. But with that said, I think Watertown citizens should determine the fate of Watertown, not out of state or not out of city money. I, as the state senator, actually believed in that not only for like the city of Watertown, but for the whole state. I tried to spearhead efforts to limit out-of-state contributions into South Dakota elections, particularly on ballot issues and constitutional amendments. Tried very hard to stop that. The problem is, the Supreme Court and the courts have constantly viewed that as a violation of free speech. And I don't know if we can stop this, but I can say personally, I am against it.
Okay. Next question, probably the elephant in the room. So we'll take that to Reed. You get the elephant. What will you do differently with the city manager in place? And will you have daily interactions? And if yes, what will those look like? Will you be weekly? And then if you win, will you be a mayor that is part-time or a mayor that is full-time with a part-time salary?
Well, as far as how often the city manager wants to talk, I think that will at least mostly be determined by the city manager. Amanda Mack is our city manager, so she is the expert. She has a history of successfully leading different cities. She was the overwhelming favorite of the entire council. I think she's going to do a fantastic job. So why, as mayor, should I interfere with her? Or start doing things that she doesn't want me to do or is counterproductive to what the city of Watertown wants? The voters of Watertown overwhelmingly voted in favor of a limited mayor. I am fine doing that. In fact, if this were the old mayoral position, I could honestly stand up here and say, I'm not sure I would be the right person for the job. But the new mayor position, I feel really matches my skill set. You want to be the champion, the cheerleader. You want to tackle tough projects. You want to create coalitions and partnerships. You want to work with citizens and groups when asked upon, but you don't interfere if you're not asked for. I have a history of building coalitions, forming teams, tackling tough projects, so I know that I can bring that to Watertown going forward, and I believe that I will be asked to do so. But as far as the daily workings of city hall, the voters of Watertown do not want that to be political. They want it to be professional. And that's my attitude, is you can have all the experience in daily workings of government, but that's not what the mayor is supposed to do going forward in Watertown. It's supposed to be about crafting vision, implementing that vision, accomplishing it. And I believe that I'm the person for that. So I will definitely stay in as much contact with Amanda Mack as she wants me to. I will bring forward ideas when they are valid, but I am not going to interfere with the daily workings of government.
Sarah, what will you do differently with the city manager in place? Will you have daily interactions, weekly, or what? And if yes, what will those look like? And if you win, will you be the mayor as a part-timer or as a full-timer with a part-time salary?
Thank you. The number-one job of the mayor in the new role will be promotion of our community, and it's very, very different from the role today. I serve both roles today. And the business, the administration, the work that the city manager will be doing takes most of the time during the week, and it pushes off all of the promotion things. Those are always shoved to the back. So as far as will it be part-time or full-time, I think that the sky is the limit, and I don't want to put a number on that. I certainly think there's plenty of work for a mayor to do that could take as much time as a person was willing to devote to it. And I have a lot of time that I plan to devote to it regardless of the salary. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I hope I get the opportunity. I think weekly meetings will probably be appropriate. And right now, I have weekly updates that I give the council every week, and I meet with council members, there's ten of them. So I meet with most of them once a month, and some of them more. And basically, I meet with a council member whenever they want. And I would assume that the city manager will have that same kind of attitude, but I will let the city manager set a tone of how often she wants to meet with me. The duties that the new role will allow me to do is to dig deeper into that citizen engagement. The intern engagement program, for instance, which I started, is just wonderful. I love it. I just don't have enough time to devote to it. And I'm looking forward to bringing that in more so that we can answer that need that we have in our community. The community has needs. We certainly have plenty of them, and we can't address all of them. But I want to work with the citizens in coming up with initiatives to help them meet those. So there's plenty of work to do.
Great. I should remind the audience and those online, these questions are, certainly, I came up with a few of them, but most of the questions are coming from the public that were emailed to the Chamber of Commerce prior to tonight's forum. We have another forum coming up on Thursday, and the chamber will certainly be looking for additional questions after tonight's for that forum, so please do submit your questions to the chamber. Next question goes to Sarah, if I'm not mistaken. And we're going to stay on the elephant, the city manager, the new position. Should the city manager communicate with the public? And if yes, how will you, as mayor, do the same?
Okay, the city manager should definitely communicate with the public. And there are lots of different ways that the person will do that, and I want to work as a partner with her. And whatever, she'll set the tone, and I will fill in the gaps. We'll have a different role, obviously. I don't expect her to tell me everything to tell the public. She'll have to give me reports, but she'll have all the nitty-gritty information to supply to the public. So very definitely, the city manager should communicate with the public. The mayor, obviously, should also communicate with the public. The mayor is the spokesperson for the community. And I'm hoping in this role to be able to collaborate more than I have been able to with other mayors and with the National League of Cities to make sure we are doing everything we can. I know former Mayor Barker was very involved in that and brought some really great ideas back. So I'm hoping to be able to have time to do that. But definitely, there's reasons and times for both the city manager and the mayor to speak to the public, and I will fill that role in a complimentary way toward the city manager.
Reed, you want me to repeat the question?
I think I'm all right.
All right.
I think that certainly the city manager should communicate with the public and the mayor's, but it's also the mayor's responsibility to be the public relations base for the city of Watertown and to help accomplish the big issues that are facing the city of Watertown. As far as like what the city manager should and should not do, I am very proud to say that as the city council vice president, I led the charge to form a committee that spelled out the roles and responsibilities that are going to be going forward for both the mayor and the city manager. That was left squandering. No one had ever tackled that. So I helped, I actually brought that to the city council, and the city council approved it, then I was on the committee, and we brought forward ordinance and policy changes that specifically spell out what the mayor can and cannot do, what the mayor should and should not do, and the same thing for the city manager. That was left undefined until I tackled it. So that's how much I believe in demarcating the roles for the city manager and the mayor going forward. And I don't just say that I support the city manager. I've already started doing it as a city council person, limiting the role. And granted, I started doing that when I had no idea I would ever be running for mayor, but I still believe in that transition. I believe in the roles and responsibilities going forward. I have a history of already tackling that issue, and I'm proud to say that we've already brought ordinance and policy changes that have been passed.
Okay. Next question goes to Reed. On the topic, you're familiar with the ICE arena, which, by the way, came up on the school board in candidates debate. It's front and center with the council and with the city. First question from a citizen. How do you justify a TIF to fund a public project, especially given this is on a greenfield space and no urban blight to clean up?
My guess is that the person who is asking that question is trying to trap and oppose the ICE arena based upon a technicality on the verbiage. Really, a TIF district, for those who don't know, tax income financing is a way to spur economic development in an area which is otherwise not developed. It's done so that you can create development and then years in the future, start bringing in tax revenue. That area out there, the lakes of Willow Creek, is certainly not producing a lot of tax income for the city currently or for the county. And by developing that area and creating the ICE arena, which will then spur other economic growth, is a great way to bring in not only property tax value, which will skyrocket in that area, but that will help the county, but then sales tax revenue, which will help the city because you'll be bringing in not only the ICE arena, which will bring in tens of thousands of people every year, but a hotel, commercial, and restaurants and things like that. So I definitely believe in developing that area and using a TIF for it. We've started using TIFs, and that, actually, the TIF is, the TIF as a tool has been brought to us by Chris Shilkin and the Watertown Development Company, and that's really what has been responsible for most all of the growth that you've seen in Watertown over the last few years. It hasn't been city hall doing it. It's been the WDC and the usage of TIFs. We're not abusing them. We've got lots of room in our budget to do so. So using that to create an ICE facility, which has long been squandering in the community, I will do anything, I mean, I will gladly stand behind that as an economic boost for the city of Watertown.
Okay. Sarah, ICE arena's front and center. How do you justify a TIF to fund a public project, especially given that it's a greenfield space?
Thank you for the question. I get the intention. And TIFs were created to clean up blighted areas in communities, areas that used to have productive buildings and businesses on them that have fallen apart and down. They're not generating tax revenue anymore. TIF financing was developed to turn that around, and that's definitely preferable. However, it's not illegal to use a TIF financing mechanism to open up a brand-new area. It's just not as sustainable. So I would definitely prefer to use a TIF in a blighted area and turn an area which is already served with roads and utilities, and we're already plowing the road. We don't have to build a new road. And the TIF can finance tearing down an old building, building something new. That's not what we're doing. But what we're doing does work, that right now, there's very little tax on it because there's nothing there. And once we build, there will be something there. The tax will be collected, and that increment between what they're paying now, what they'll pay afterward, can be funneled back to offset the cost of development. So it's an excellent tool, and it will help to reduce the debt that the public has for the ICE arena. And that's what I see in good about the way that it's going about because it will cost less for the public to have this ICE arena if we build it out there, and it develops the way that we plan. The downside is, we've got to build five million dollars' worth of new roads, new utilities, things that we aren't currently plowing and maintaining. Now we'll have Now we'll have that added burden, which subtracts a little bit from the tax increment benefit. So it would be great if we could use it to eliminate blight, but it's still good that we can use it in the way that it's proposed.
Mark, just a quick correction. We're not building the roads. We're not paying for the building of the roads or for the utilities. That was part of the deal that we crafted.
The only reason I let you do this is because you explained TIF and I didn't.
Okay.
All right. I should, question goes to Sarah. Shouldn't there be a public vote on this $15 million project like we did with the rec center?
Actually, I, I really do think that there should be a vote. And we thought there was going to be a vote. That was kind of a last-minute change. I think it was being worked up for quite a while, but I was out of the loop. I didn't find out that that's not what we were doing until right before it came to the public. I still have questions about it. I, you know, I, I am not sure what the end product is going to be. I think it has promise, but I still do have some questions about it, some red flags there. And hopefully, the committee will be able to answer those questions. But the way that we're going about it is, you know, the public doesn't get to vote on that. But the public is also not building it. We're leasing it from the Watertown Development Company. So I guess I can't say how I feel exactly, other than I was disappointed that the public didn't get to vote on it.
Reed, shouldn't the public vote on the $15 million ice arena project?
Oh, okay, because I thought it was the $15 million bond that you asked about.
Well, it's tied to the ice arena.
Actually, the $15 million bond is most definitely not tied to the ice arena.
Okay, go ahead.
In fact, I mean, with, I am more than happy.
You got the question, I'm asking the question.
Okay, yeah, I want to make that clear for everyone. That $15 million bond was most definitely not tied to the ice arena. In fact, part of the reason why we crafted this deal the way that we did was to avoid bonding because I didn't want to go down that road. But the $15 million bond, which you were talking about, I really dislike because we don't even know where that money's going to be spent. We had maybe $3 million to renovate the new city hall, maybe $5 million to $8 million for a street department, maybe something else, but.
Okay, now I got, let me ask this question. Let me interrupt.
Okay, can I just finish one thought on the $15 million bond? The problem, the big problem that I have with the $15 million bond was it was unencumbered, which means you could spend it on anything. They don't even know what they're spending it for. And, but the one thing I do know is if you allow government to spend $15 million, they're going to darn well spend $15 million on something. So I disagree with that.
So here's the question. Should the public be voting on a $15 million ice arena?
They sure can. They can refer it if they wanted to. The reason why we crafted the bill, that crafted the project the way we did is because this spurred economic development. If you can craft it to create $50 million, 50 million, some project, some proposal, it could be 70 million, but it had to be done through a TIF. Now, the WDC was going to handle the TIF anyway. So if they want to be the conduit to make that happen, because they handle all the TIFs for the city of Watertown anyway, then let them do it because they're the experts on it. We get a massive new tax influx revenue into the city of Watertown doing it this way. And all I will say is, other than this one question, the sentiment in the community has been overwhelmingly positive for, first off, just can't finally tackling and bringing forward a proposal on the ice arena and doing it in a way that benefits all of Watertown.
I'm going to offer a 30-second additional comment since I interrupted Reed. He may have got a few seconds. Do you want to add anything to what you said?
Me?
Yep.
I, I would like to comment on that.
30 seconds.
Okay. I, I think there's a misnomer about the $15 million bond, that it isn't, we're not bonding for 15 million, we're bonding for things that the council approves, bit by bit, up to $15 million max. And we haven't spent that and we, we won't take out more than we need. The council will approve it. And that has a public vote. And if, if the public doesn't want us to spend the money, we won't.
Okay. Let's get off the ice arena since I did such a great job. Reed, you get this one. Do you think the city is relying too heavily on Fargo-based Craig Development? Who, Craig Development is the one that's building many of the new apartment buildings in the downtown of Watertown.
I guess the answer to that is, I mean, as a council, if Craig LLC brings forward a project and we like the project and we vote for it, that's a case-by-case instance. If they are bringing in money and development into the city, that's a boon to Watertown. With that said, I would prefer if it is our local developers, local contractors doing this. And in fact, that's what we are currently in, I hate to tie it back to the ice arena. You said that we're getting off that. But this is the biggest project facing Watertown going forward. And we are constantly having meetings now. We hired an owner's representative, the ICE committee brought forward that suggestion to make sure that Craig LLC is at least considering and trying to hire local contractors in the building of this ice arena. Because we want that local buy-in. We want, we want the local contractors to benefit off of this because this makes it more of a community facility, which is what we wanted all along. So, I mean, I'm not going to stop someone from out of the city coming in and spending money here. That's not what we really need to do. But with that said, I will help anyone spur economic development in the city of Watertown because in the end, it benefits all of the citizens of Watertown.
Sarah, do you think the city is relying too heavily on Fargo-based Craig Development?
I do not think that the city is relying too heavily on Fargo-based developer. I wish we had local developers doing what Fargo-based developer is doing right now. Everyone gets the same review. If we'd had a proposal from a local developer, we certainly would have entertained it and probably hired him. And it's just that that's not been proposed. We've had a developer from outside our community come into our community, do things we need done, and it's been great for us. I'm very happy that he's come and I hope some of the local developers will pattern their work after his and so that we'll get more development like that. It's a different way of doing things. He was very experienced in doing that in other communities. And he's come down here and kind of broken the ground for us. So we do have a local developer that is looking to do a very similar type of development. I'm excited about that. But we don't pick and choose who's going to make a proposal to develop in our community. Developers come and ask us for a permit. That's how it works. We don't pick who asks for a permit. So maybe we'll see more of this from the example that's been set.
Good. This one goes back to Sarah. Sarah, COVID-19 consumed us the last year in the pandemic. Both of you were serving on the council during the pandemic and before the pandemic. Tell the citizens, the voters, what we did right, what we could have done better. In your view on should we have had a mask, mandatory mask mandate or not?
Thank you.
Looking back.
Yes. Definitely what the city did right was immediately form an incident command team. And we've very well practiced in doing that for flooding. And in fact, we were mobilized with a flood control incident command team. As some might remember, 2019 looked like it was going to be a flood year too. Thank goodness it wasn't. But we formed a task force made up of doctors, nurses, county representatives, city representatives, first responders, law enforcement, volunteer coordinators, all sorts of people from our committee, community came together to form this task force. And we had regular, frequent communication that was game-changing. We did that right. And the, the public was well-served by that effort. I, I think that, looking back, we, I can't really think of anything that we did wrong. We did entertain a lot of public input and I was disappointed in how the mask thing came down. We, we have, the city council approved a mask resolution, which I thought was great. We didn't do an ordinance, we did a resolution. And the resolution said all citizens in our community should wear a mask if they're within six feet of another person indoors. And it was a majority of the council, but our council vice president and our council president did not vote for that. And so they didn't like the rule and they didn't wear masks. And I, I thought that was a missed message from the get-go out to our community. That our, our city council said we should do this and then some members of the city council didn't do it. So that, I think, was a misstep. I, I know that it got all political and that's a miss, that was too bad. Because it isn't a political issue, it was a matter of public health. And a mask, wearing a mask is an easy thing to do. The health officials were all telling us we should do it. And so I think we should have followed.
Reed, want me to repeat the question? Sure. The last, COVID-19 consumed us and you were on the council before, during, and after, still with us. What did the city do right? What could we have done better? And describe for the voters your view on, on the potential of the mask mandate now in hindsight, looking back.
Well, I voted against the mask mandate and I had my reasons. You can go back, watch that city council. I don't think that the science was 100% behind it, but if you're talking about things that could have been done better, the way that this was brought forward into the council was definitely divisive. There was, it was basically put out to us that either you're smart or you're dumb is the way that the vote was crafted. And I disagreed with that because there are good, there are good people in all walks of life, including the medical field, that questioned the validity of masks. And I did, I will say what, what happened right was the state of South Dakota. I've never loved living in South Dakota more than the last year where we cherish our freedom. But the thing is with COVID and masks, you want to protect the at-risk population. The incident that the mayor was referring to, where I wasn't wearing a mask, if you go back and watch that city council meeting, she actually insulted council president and myself. Now, here's the deal. I had COVID and I was over it, which means I had the antibodies. I also have some lung issues, which means I don't breathe well in a mask. So rather than call me out and insult me in public, you could have just asked me why I wasn't wearing a mask. I wasn't at risk to anyone, nor was I at risk from someone. And I had a good reason why I didn't do it. There are many people. And if you're talking about mixed messages, there was a Lincoln Day dinner just a couple weeks ago where the mayor came in not wearing a mask. So where does that come from? And I mean, I'm just saying, if you want it mandated, half the guts to mandate it. I did not want it mandated. I think, I believe in personal freedom. You follow through with it, you protect the at-risk people. And in my case, I had good reasons and a history behind it.
Next question goes to Reed. Given the slate of candidates for the six ward positions and at-large position, the term alderman certainly will apply. How do we get more women to run for council positions in the city of Watertown going forward, given we have an all-male slate?
I think we start encouraging them. I think it's fantastic. And first off, if you're talking like sexist language, which this implies, if you notice, I, I make it a point, I respect the position regardless of the gender. So in every council meeting, if you notice, I always refer to mayor. I don't do madam mayor because I don't think it's a position that's defined by gender, nor do I think city council person is defined by gender. That's why I usually refer to city council person. I think having more women involved would be fantastic. I can say that my wife makes, certainly has input on my political decisions, as do my kids. And I will listen to anyone. I don't, I don't view it as a male-female thing, young-gold. I think it's, do you believe in the city of Watertown? Do you want the best for it? I would be very encouraging for more women to be involved. So I, that would be fantastic.
Sarah, given the slate of candidates, all male for the at-large and ward positions, the term alderman certainly can be used over the next couple of years. How do we get more women to run for council positions in the future and what will you do?
I'm glad you asked that question. It hurts my heart that there are so few women running for public office, but I totally get it. I totally get it. Women are disrespected and disregarded and discounted regularly. And men don't even realize they're doing it half the time. It's, you know, men and women are different and I, I don't want to say one's better and one's worse. They aren't. We need some of each. Diversity is good. Some men, some women. And when you have all of one, that's really bad because there is a different perspective and you're losing it when you don't have women. So how do we get more women? Stick to the issues. Let's, let's not twist what's being said into things that are, are not what they really are. Less shenanigans. Okay? The, the, an example of this is abuse of executive session. We're not abusing executive session. Nobody was complaining. And, and I, I think that if the complaint had come sooner, we may have switched and just put off executive sessions. We, there's certain things you can't do and we, we're trying to follow the law. We're doing our best to do good things for the community all the time. And there's all these games being played. I don't play games. I know that my fellow councilwoman, Manti, doesn't play games. The shenanigans make it inhospitable for women. So I, I think that's probably the, the single most important thing you could do. Stick to the issues.
Okay. Next question goes to Sarah. Lots of money flowing downhill. DC printed like crazy to the state and maybe to the city. So what's your priority, Sarah, for using those funds? Which projects and why?
Okay, well, roads. Roads are a priority for me. If we have an excess of money, I, I would want to put it toward roads first and foremost. If we have leftover money after doing that, I would probably supplement some of the projects that we've already budgeted for, that we're falling short on, to make sure that we can do them right. And that, because we have projects on our books that we're struggling to find the funds to do. Everything's gone up in cost and I, I do think that some costs will come back down, but Economics 101 says when you feed that money and you're going to have inflation. So it's not going to come back down to pre-levels. So we will be able to find good, solid uses for those. And mostly, I think we should use them on roads and projects that the city already has in the books.
Reed, lots of money flowing downhill, we hope to our city. What's your priority for using those funds? Which projects and why?
Well, I would certainly agree with spending it on roads. It's the number-one thing we always hear in city government. And it's the, because it's a daily impact upon people's lives. So certainly, roads should be a priority. I also think we should do whatever we can to keep taxes low and spend that money in a way that prepares us for the inflation going forward. Because not only will we have inflation, but very likely a devaluation of the dollar. You simply can't print this much money and expect life to remain the way that it is. So we, as a city, have to be smart with the way that we spend it. We need to do it in such a way to keep taxes low. I'm not necessarily sure of spending on new projects, which will, like, there are certain new projects that will result in ongoing expenses. So we have to be smart with the way that we structure like an upfront cost and not burden the city with ongoing money. So I think we can spend the money now on roads and important projects, but we should also keep taxes low and prepare for probably economic volatility going forward.
Next question goes to Reed. And full disclosure, this one's mine. Also, I'm on the Lake of Pesca Water Project District Board. I gave you both a chance to put this project as a priority. You both missed it, so now I'm going to ask you about it, starting with Reed. Cleaning up Lake Pesca is a, a part of the city's adopted comprehensive use plan for the lake. Lately, there have been public meetings, of which our organization, government organization, has been conducting, as, as others, discussing a potential new, lower-cost solution than what the city has seen before for cleaning up Lake Pesca. Do you, are you aware of this solution? Do you favor this new solution? And would you use any of those? And would you use any of those state, federal dollars to help kickstart and fund this effort for cleaning up Compesca?
Well, I would say I would definitely be in favor of spending these dollars that are coming in on Lake Compesca. It is a centerpiece to the town, and for the tax base, for the citizens of Watertown, and for the recreation quality of life, I think it's fantastic. So whatever we can do for the, for Lake Compesca to make it clean, to make it a gift for future generations, we will gladly do. So yeah, if it's, if there is some money, you talk about roads, also spend it on Lake Compesca, I think that would be well-spent. So I would agree in spending some of that money on the phosphorus removal program, which we have already started, that has been, it has been achieving success. I'd like to see it happen faster, but the last couple of years, there's been success there. So I think if we continue down that road, I think the citizen-led groups, this is another example where this is a citizen-led group and not necessarily a city-led group. And I just want to thank the, the concerned citizens who have always volunteered for that, for that board. So whatever we can do, I'd be glad to do it.
Sarah, want me to repeat that?
No, that's fine, thank you. Cleaning lake should, the lake should be a, a very high priority, and it is. But the problem with cleaning up a dirty lake, if, if you don't cut off the dirt that's coming into it, it's not strategic. So I, I think it's a higher priority to limit the flow that comes into the lake with flood control measures. That would be a higher priority. We also have a zebra mussel issue now, and one of the things that zebra mussels do is clean the water. And I, I know it's, it's not good, it's not an even trade, we don't want zebra mussels. But we have them, and they are going to have an impact on the water clarity. We don't know how that's going to affect this phosphorus removal facility that's been pitched. The question was asked of the consultant, and their answer was, "They don't know." And so I think that it, I would like to do that project. I just think the timing is critical, and this is probably not the right time to invest in that particular method. Not that we wouldn't do that in the future, but I think the, the funds are more strategic on flood control.
Good news is, I don't give a big butt. All right, here's the final question, we have many more, but we're going to end with this question, then we'll go to closing remarks. So this question goes to Sarah. Been lots of discussions through the years, but maybe even so the last year in particular, about wage studies at city hall, including wondering if that's part of the reason for the high employee turnover at city hall. Where do you come down, Sarah, on wage increases for our city employees? You know, should they be annually, every couple of years, should we do adjustments? What's your take, and for them, against them? Tell us your, your, your view on wages for our city employees.
City employees need to have competitive wages, or we won't have quality city employees. We did a wage study that was way overdue, that you should do them every three to five years. It had been 19 years. And the, the wage study did have some interesting results, which did relate to turnover. We did have people leave. We found with that wage study that there were a few people making higher wages than the market would say for their position. Then there were a whole bunch of people, mostly those who had been here with the previous wage study and had gotten raises every year. The consultants said, "They're right where they need to be." And then another group of people that were making considerably less than the market said they should pay. So the, the council was completely behind me when I say this, but we wanted every single employee to be making a fair wage. Some of them are going to make more than a fair wage, and that's okay. But it's not okay to have people that are paid less than the market rate. And we try to correct that. The, the wage study did make some people mad, and they thought it was a raise study, and it wasn't. We did have turnover because of it. And I, I think though, that most of the people that left were disappointed that they didn't get a big enough raise. Everyone should get a raise, to keep up with inflation. And I, I think that we do need to continuously update our wages and make sure we're being fair and competitive.
Reed, your view on the city wage structure and where we're going? Sal, increases for employees, when, not at all, somewhere in between?
Well, certainly, it's something that we need to stay on top of as a city council. But the way the wage study happened was really mishandled, and I voted for it, I'll own that. But I want to apologize for that, because I will fully admit that maybe I didn't do my job, but I wasn't given the full information that I felt was necessary to make this decision. I was never able to talk to a city employee. They were always restricted to not talk to a councilperson. So all of these grievances I heard from employees after the fact, I was never able to hear before I made the vote, which I apologize for. But there's kind of restrictions where city council people are not encouraged or allowed to talk with city staff. And so I wasn't able to properly vet that issue, which has resulted in a big problem. We, in just over two years, we've lost 25% of our staff to either firing, quitting, or early retirement. And any organization, any business can't handle with, can't survive with that kind of turnover. And that's part of the reason why I think there's been kind of a negative workforce environment at city hall, which is something, I believe we have great employees at city hall. I've talked with some of them now in secret. They really want to do their job, they want to do a fantastic job, but they need to be empowered to do that. And that's not just with money, that's in attitude. You've got to free them up to do their job. You've got to let the department heads and all of the engineers, all the finance people just do a fantastic job. They're professionals, let them do their job, it's just like the city managers, so.
Okay, we're at the end of the question-and-answer period, so now we're going to go into closing comments, where your chance to tell the voters of Watertown why they should vote for you. We began this evening with Reed in the intro, so we'll start with Sarah on the closing remarks. Sarah?
All right, thank you. I enjoy being the mayor. I am proud of all we've accomplished, economic development, downtown revitalization, sales tax growth. Collaboration has been the key. I didn't do that myself. If my opponent wins, the female half of our community will go completely without representation. We'll have a male councilman, or a mayor, a male mayor, and all male councilmen. We need women on the council. I say, "We're stronger together with a mix," and I, I can't stress that enough. Under my leadership, Watertown earned the strongest town title in a national contest and the South Dakota Large Community of the Year by the Governor's Office of Economic Development. My experience in public administration, my proven work ethic, and my passion for public service are my strengths. There's so much more to do. Being mayor is my only priority, I owe nothing to special interest groups. You deserve a trustworthy mayor who's committed to public service. I'll be honored to continue. Please reelect Karen for mayor, thank you.
Reed, your closing remarks, why should we vote for you?
I'd kind of like to say, I'm, I'm sorry that you feel that way, that you, only women can represent women. I, I just don't think that that's right. I certainly know that my, my wife, my daughters, who I love very much, they don't feel that way. I would just encourage the citizens of Watertown, vote for the candidate, not the sex, not the gender. So with that said, I'd like to reiterate, I have the experience representing all of Watertown. In my experience, I've led government on behalf of Watertown, out in the state, passed laws, tackled big projects, and I believe that I would continue that. As mayor though, it's more going to be about vision, and my vision is about positivity for the city. I really think that I could accomplish a culture shift of positivity with the employees, and I will go back to that, I want to make city hall a customer service organization. I think whenever a citizen walks into city hall, the first words they should hear is, "How can I help you?" And I really think that's the attitude that we need going forward. There's an old saying in politics that says, "You can't fight city hall." But with me as your mayor, you won't have to, because I'll be working with you, for you, for the betterment of all of Watertown, regardless of what sex you are. I just want all of Watertown to succeed, I love this town. It has given me so much, and I just want to give back to it. I believe I'm the best candidate to do it, and I thank you, and I would appreciate your vote.
I think what we ought to do is to recognize both for volunteering, throwing your hat in the ring, and coming up on stage, be peppered by a bunch of questions. It's pretty easy to be on that side of the ledger, very difficult to be on this side. Regardless of how the vote takes place, it's important that we recognize those that do throw their hat in the ring and run for one of these elected positions. I'd also like to note that tonight's forum was not a debate, it was a forum of questions with answers. And we think we got that done. This forum was sponsored by the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce. It'll be on their YouTube channel, or Facebook Live, and then it'll be on the city's GovTV, and I think the city's YouTube site too. So if you have friends or acquaintances that want to see this, or you want to review it, please do. You'll get to see that I screwed up on the introductions for the school board candidates debate. I'll probably have to watch it for that reason alone. With that, let's offer our hand of applause to these two fine Watertown citizens.